Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the November 4th, 2013 City Council Meeting. Roll call, please. Mr. Clerk?
Alderman May.
President.
Alderman Valco.
President.
Alderman Rivera.
President.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conkin.
President.
Alderman Moizio.
President.
Alderman Beedley. Alderman Newsome.
President.
Alderman Tempest.
President.
The former mayor.
Ambacation. Bishop Colburn.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you again for another City Council meeting. We thank you for our mayor. We thank you for this Alderman. We thank you for all of our city officials. You said in the scripture to pray for those that are in authority. We pray for every one of them. Pray for all of our citizens in the name of God of all creation. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to present some letters of appreciation for the Volunteers of the Month. These individuals work for the City of Waukegan at no pay. They work as receptionists. They are the first person you see in the city are these individuals. Is Minnie Templeton here?
Yes.
Minnie, please step up here. Barbara Simpson.
Yes.
And Mitch Segal. Is Mitch here?
Yes.
All three. Ladies and gentlemen, these three individuals have spent numerous hours at no cost to the taxpayers helping us make this city work more effectively and more efficiently. If you come to this city and you walk in that front door, you will be greeted by a horrendous smile by all three of these individuals. They are great people. They're compassionate. They're courageous. And I'm very proud to present them with Volunteer of the Month of October 2013. We have a new website up. Most of you have seen the old website and see the new website. We had a -- we were notified by the Illinois Policy Institute Local Transparency Project of our webpage. And when we first got our -- they rate your webpages. And our first rating out of 100 was 29.2. Not too good. So Noel Kishir and David Motley took it upon themselves to restructure our webpage. Take a look at it. Our new rating is 67.7, which is right above, well above average. So Noel and David, thank you so much. I'd like to acknowledge that. For those of you who haven't noticed yet, that is a new city sticker. You see it on the pedestal over there? That is a new city sticker. It identifies our library as the number one library in the nation this year. Very proud of that. We want to give them that recognition. It's well deserved. As David here?
Just walked out.
Okay. We have with us today -- am I going to make this anonymous, David, or someone else? About firefighters?
Uh, we have resolution.
Oh, that's okay. We'll do that later. But as long as I've got the mic, you have no idea how proud I am of our fire department. Not just this group. I am so proud of our fire department because these men have thrust us into the national spotlight again, again. Our park district, our library, and now our fire department. Gentlemen, thank you so much.
Did we?
You have done a job that's exemplary, and you have my respect and admiration. Thank you so much. We'll present something to you later. I think that's all I have. The next is audience time. First one is Jane Ferry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Jane Ferry, 531 Leith Avenue, and Executive Director of Waukegan Main Street. Thank you for this time. We have a number of upcoming events in downtown Waukegan, but I'm actually only going to talk about three of them. One of them is the Veterans Day Parade and Ceremony. That will be on November 11th, which is next Monday. The parade kicks off at 10:30 at Genesee and Grand and continues to Washington and West, to the Veterans Plaza. The ceremony will take place at Veterans Plaza at 11:11 a.m. We have Art Walk again this month, as we do every single month on the third Saturday. This one is on November 16th, and it starts at 5:00 p.m. The Art Walk generally brings about 1,000 people to downtown Waukegan. If you're not one of them or haven't been one of them yet, this is your opportunity. It's a lot of fun. It's closing in on the holidays, so it's an excellent time to shop for your holiday gifts. And I'm mentioning this because, as we have discovered, 70 cents out of every dollar spent locally stays locally. So I'm challenging everybody in this room and everybody watching this at home to start with shopping local first when you're looking for your holiday gifts. Come downtown. We have a number of galleries. We have a number of shops. We have a number of restaurants and a number of theaters who are happy to sell you gifts and gift cards and gift certificates. Shop locally. And then finally, mark your calendars for December 7th. That is Holiday Walk and Marketplace. This is really a fun event for families, for kids, for everyone. It kicks off with breakfast with Frosty at the beautiful Genesee Theater at 10 o'clock in the morning, and it ends with a tree lighting. Mr. Mayor will be lighting the tree in Jack Benny Plaza at about 5 o'clock. In between there, there are a number of activities that are going on up and down the street, at the library, at the Genesee, at the other theaters in downtown. Again, a chance to shop local. As always, you can find more information at our website, which is waukegammainstreet.org, or you can call me at 623-6650, and of course, that's 847. Thanks so much for this opportunity, everybody.
Thank you, Jane. Brenda Mims?
My name is Brenda Mims. I stay at 230 Stewart Avenue. I have been in my house since -- we bought the house in May of 2011. Ever since July 2011, my family has been harassed. At this point, we're the only African-American on this block. Now, the City of Waukegan is piggybacking on the neighbor, Robert Allen. On October 29, 2013, we received violation on two of his trucks zoning. Article 11. Article 11 was not violated. Article 11 talks about the Lakefront District. And I'm in Ward 6, and I have an issue with that. The police come to my house on Friday about the dogs at 7:20, stating that the dogs will only be outside for 10 minutes. And now, about 9:15, the police sitting in front of my house. And what can the city do about that? Thank you.
Ma'am, if you'll call my office in the morning, we'll talk, okay? Okay, ma'am?
Your Honor, before we move any further, motion to seat Alderman Cunningham?
A motion by Alderman Conkin, second by Alderman Moizio. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, sir.
Chris Blanks, 409 Oak.
You know, Mayor, I asked the young lady to come down here because I really don't know who Mr. Bob Allen feels he knows down here at this city that he can take part in intimidating his family or, you know, have his way. But that can't be tolerated by no means, by no measure. But I'm here to let her know that she has friends, and just as whoever has been visiting Mr. Allen and make him feel comfortable enough that he can continue to harass and intimidate his family in that way, that can't be tolerated. It shouldn't be tolerated by the city or any citizens that promote fairness. So we're going to be going by to visit her from time to time because what I'm asking, we want the harassment and intimidation to stop. I mean, this woman and her husband has just as much of a right to provide for their families to try to start a business, and if he want to do junking or whatever, as long as he's doing it within -- as long as he's doing it within fair ordinance of the city, then they shouldn't be harassed and intimidated, and it's not right. So, you know, along with that, it goes, it falls right under the lines of what I was talking about with Ms. Eunice Sanders. People that's trying to provide for them families, they should be able to be treated fairly and right. Same, in the same ward. I brought Mr. Willie Roddell here. He gets a ticket in that same ward for not having a city sticker. But you got other citizens, or I'm sorry, police officers who can park on the police parking lot, elected officials who can park without having any consequences until it's brought to the city floor. So I thought that maybe I bring this lady to come down here, and if that's what it takes to put issues on this city floor to make sure the citizens are treated fairly, then we'll continue to do that until every citizen in this city is treated just as much equally as the elected officials and the police officers because we can't have, we can't have the officials being above the law while the citizens out here being harassed and intimidated by no measure, no means. Thank you. And I'll be supporting that lady. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Before we go to minutes, I was, I guess, I received a phone call today from an anonymous source, and that source told me that Alderman Conkin's birthday was tonight. So happy birthday, Alderman Conkin.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
And I'm working.
Next would be a motion to approve the minutes dated October 21st, 2013. Motion by the birthday boy, Alderman Conkin, seconded by Alderman Valco. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution proclamations, a resolution for the Lake County Marine Corps League Red Ribbon Weak Observance. Is there anyone here from the Marine Corps? If not, we'll place that on file, Mr. Clerk.
Yes, sir.
Next is the resolution for the Waukegan Fire Department Combat Challenge World Championship Relay Team. Mr. Clerk?
Resolution 13R at dash 85. Whereas on October 27th, 2013, four members of the Waukegan Fire Department competed in the World Combat Challenge Championships held in Las Vegas. And whereas Battalion Chief George Bridges Jr., Lieutenant Anthony Solar, firefighter Thomas Clausen, and firefighter Alfonso Ramos competed as a team in the Over 40 Relay Division. And whereas the team of Bridges, Solar, Clausen, and Ramos won the Over 40 Relay Division, and in doing so, set a new world championship record of 1 minute 16.53 seconds. Now therefore, be resolved that Mayor Motley and the Waukegan City Council express their congratulations and appreciation to the Waukegan Fire Department World Champion Combat Challenge Champions for their great representation of the City of Waukegan and for a job well done. Be it further resolved that a suitable embossed copy of this resolution, signed by the mayor and city clerk, be presented to the members of this championship team. Date it fourth day of November, 2013. Signed, Wayne Motley, Mayor, Artis Yancy, Clerk. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Congratulations. Chief, can you come up here, please? Bring the gentleman up front, please.
Lieutenant, you're not only a gourmet cook, but you're a world champion now, too.
Very delicious.
Thank you. Proud of it.
Does I have to say anything, clerk?
Yes.
I knew that would be.
Just like his dad.
I'm sorry. I have to tell those story about the mayor. I have to say, I have to make sure that everyone is aware that you cannot tell the mayor or the chief anything that you need because we told him of the pursuit that we were going to have as a team and how we wanted to try to accomplish this, and we know the financial strains on the city. And within two days, we had people that the mayor was talking to, we had Chief Farrell had spoken to different members of the city, and we already had sponsors. Within two days after asking them about the fund, so I have to say, I'm sorry, I have to tell you, I know he's going to get it done if you ask him for something. So I have to say, thank you, Mayor. We appreciate your support, council. We appreciate your support so much. One last thing. We want to thank, we want to thank that as a team, but we have to thank our wives and our families and friends for supporting us. And we also have to thank the community because the community came together for us. We have Larson Flores. We have Fan Steel Laboratories that came out. These are our sponsors here that stepped up. And I mean, within two weeks, they had us fully funded to go to this event and come back with the world championship. And we do have sponsors here tonight. Can I please ask you guys the same? I'm sorry. Can I please ask you guys the same? Congratulations. And actually, we had, because we want to acknowledge you also because you helped us earn this. And I think it's Fan Steel. Representative from Fan Steel, would you please state your name, please?
Cindy Kirkert. President.
President. Thank you. Waukegan Exchange Club?
Pat Foley.
Pat Foley. Thank you so much.
I have the president of the exchange.
President. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Straight smoking gun?
Yay!
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Glad you see the flag.
They want to see, George, they want to see the flag.
They want to see the flag.
And these guys are champions. They also, for being the world champs, they get rings, and they also get a custom helmet for being the champions. So, oh, and I almost forgot, we were invited to the Cotton Bowl in January. But unfortunately.
Thank you, gentlemen. Community reports, Judiciary Committee, Alderman Rivera. Thank you. Judiciary Committee met on October 28th, 2013, Monday. Item A, amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Waukegan regarding tax amendment to Section 7.3, the ER-1 Estate Residence District zoning calendar, 2402. This is in regards to the River Road residents meeting with the planning and zoning. And as a result of those discussions, the residents felt that the zoning designation that would best suit their properties would be, of course, the ER-1 Estate Residence designation. And due to the many of the properties being well over 80,000 square feet in size, and many of these residents didn't have thoughts of subdividing their properties in the future, but rather to maintain their properties as is. What is beneficial about proposing these tax amendments now is that there are currently no properties anywhere within the City of Waukegan that are currently zoned ER-1 Estate Residence. So these changes will not negatively affect any existing properties with some suggested changes and compromises between the staff and the residents along the River Road. There are approximately, what is it, one, two, three, four, four tax amendments. And the first one, as far as the amendment is concerned, is accessory uses. And what they want to do is add caretakers' residence to the zoning ordinance. Also, they want to also add to the Waukegan zoning ordinance, they want to amend by adding a minimum of lot sizes of 200,000 square feet and a minimum lot width of 150 feet for the caretakers' residence. They also want to add, they want to amend of lowering the minimum lot size requirement of stabling of the horses from five acres to 200,000 square feet. Residents, you know, definitely brought up a good point with the minimum lot size requirements of ER-1 and ER-2 being in the 40,000 square foot increments. And why not require the stabling under the same increment rather than the 43,560 square foot increments? So the 200,000 square foot size also brings into compliance existing horse stables which were erected prior to the properties being annexed into the city in 2006. The difference is only 17,800 square feet. Also, they want to amend also by establishing a minimum square footage requirement of 25,000 square feet for each horse stabled. They also want to amend the yard requirements by amending, by lowering the minimum front yard setback requirements for single-family detached residents from 50 to 45 feet. And this will make existing residents conform to the zoning requirements since these residents were constructed prior to their annexation of the city back in 2006. So each of these amendments have to be voted on separately. So the first one reads, again, I'll repeat it, amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Waukegan regarding tax amendment to Section 7.3, ER-1 Estate Residence District zoning calendar, 2402. An iso move.
Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please. Mr. Clerk? Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Item B, amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Waukegan regarding tax amendment to Section 7.4, the ER-2 Estate Residence District regarding stabling of horses zoning, 2403. An iso move.
Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please. Mr. Clerk? Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Item C, amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Waukegan regarding tax amendment to Section 13.2 definitions defining caretakers' residence and redefining ornamental fence zoning calendar, number 2402, an iso, oh, 04. An iso move.
Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please. Mr. Clerk? Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Item D, amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Waukegan regarding tax amendment to Section 4.41 (2) (8) regarding non-conforming fences and fence height in the ER-1 District zoning calendar, 2405. An iso move.
Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please. Mr. Clerk? Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Item C, amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Waukegan regarding tax amendment to Section 13.2 definitions defining caretakers' residence and redefining ornamental fence zoning calendar, number 2402, an iso, oh, 04. An iso move.
Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please. Mr. Clerk? Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Item D, amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Waukegan regarding tax amendment to Section 4.41 (2) (8) regarding non-conforming fences and fence height in the ER-1 District zoning calendar, 2405. An iso move.
Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please. Mr. Clerk? Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Passing, Mayor.
And item E, and this is to amend the map rezoning from CR Conservation Recreation to ER-2 Estate Residence zoning calendar, 2406, for the property located at 1705 South River Road. And this is the resident that didn't want the ER-1, they wanted to do the ER-2. An iso move.
Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please. Mr. Clerk? Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
That is it, Mayor. Public Safety Committee, Alderman Conkin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We, the Public Safety Committee met on Thursday night at 5:30 p.m. We had a number of items to discuss. Item A, Public Safety Committee recommends, and iso moved, that the city authorize entering into a memorandum of understanding with the Lake County Emergency Telephone System Board. This is a program that provides the department the ability to access all emergency calls for police and fire services from surrounding communities in real-time format and costs nothing to the city. This issue pertains to more, in case of an emergency like winds, tornadoes, storms, we'd have real-time access to what's happening in all the different communities, and it's iso move that we accept this.
Motion by Alderman Conkin, second by Alderman Beedley. Roll call, please. Mr. Clerk? Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Item B, authorize the lifting of the handicap parking restriction in front of 574 McAllister Avenue and remove the handicap parking sign. It is no longer deemed necessary. Iso move.
Motion by Alderman Conkin, second by Alderman Beedley. Roll call, please. Mr. Clerk? Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Your Honor, item C was held over in committee. The committee wanted a little more information before we acted on it. So moving to item D, City Public Safety Committee recommends iso move that the proper city officials be authorized a draft in ordinance to reflect prohibited parking on McAllister McAllister Avenue on the east side from McKinley Avenue South to South Avenue, and that the current restrictions be lifted. ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Conken, second by Alderman Beadley. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Item E, waive the bid procedure and purchase two two thousand and fourteen Ford Police Interceptor SUVs at the state bid price of twenty-nine thousand one hundred and twenty-nine dollars from the Morrow Brothers Ford of Greenfield, Illinois, state bid number four-zero-one-seven-one-five-nine. The line item for this expenditure is two-nine-two-dash-six-two-nine-two-two-six-four-nine-three. ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Conken, second by Alderman Beadley. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Passes, Your Honor.
Item F, the Public Safety Committee recommends, and ISO move, that the city council approve the request from the Waukegan Police Department to waive the bid procedures and authorize the proper city officials to enter into a contract with Hucker Electric to repair and tune fifteen of the emergency alert sirens throughout the city for an amount of thirty-five-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-two dollars. The line item for this expenditure is one-zero-zero-dash-six-zero-seven-seven-two-four-four-one-two. ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Conken, second by Alderman Beadley. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman May.
I'm sorry, can I ask a quick question? You know, we have a Bears game and all that, but I'm just curious why we're waiving the bid procedure on this item.
From my understanding, what I was explaining was that the, as we asked the same question, Hucker Electric is one of the only providers that knows how these, these things are old, and they're the only ones that have the access to-
I understand, they have a history of servicing our-
...service and they have their-
They're the maintenance contractors.
I'm just asking the question. Thank you. And my vote is aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
I vote aye, and thank Alderman May for giving me an explanation.
The only other item of information, for information only, we just, to let everybody know that unfortunately, our beagle that we wanted for our drug detection dog, they weren't working out, so the police department has moved on. They've gotten another dog that's in training right now. Supposedly, it's coming along very well, but the two, the beagles that we have for that job have found homes and everything's fine with them, so we're just moving on to a different dog. And that's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Conken. Reports and communications, item A, city of Waukegan officials estimated the aggregate levy to be twenty-two million dollars for the two thousand and thirteen tax year per thirty-five ILCS two-hundred-dash-eighteen-dash-sixty. Motion to place on file by Alderman Beadley, second by Alderman Cunningham. All's in favor?
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, this will be posted in the paper, and we will have a tax levy discussion in December. New business recommended actions by Corporation Council, item A, approval of payroll dated November one, two thousand and thirteen in the amount of one million, three hundred and forty-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars and seventy-six. Motion by Alderman Valco, seconded by Alderman Rivera. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Item B, approval of final payout dated November first, two thousand and thirteen in the amount of sixteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and ninety-five cents. Motion by Alderman Valco, seconded by Alderman May. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Item C, approval of IAAF Uniform Allowance dated November first, two thousand and thirteen in the amount of two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Motion by Alderman Valco, seconded by Alderman Newsome. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Item D, approval of bills dated November fourth, two thousand and thirteen in the amount of one million, forty-one, forty-one thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars and thirty-three cents. Motion by Alderman Valco, seconded by Alderman Moizio. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Item E, presentation by Treasurer John Schwab, Treasurer Schwab.
Mayor Alderman, I'm pleased to announce that the auditors have completed the audit. The auditors will be here at the next city council meeting on November eighteenth to present the audit and answer questions. An extension for the state filing of the audit has been applied for and granted. I expect the filing of the audit to the state to be done before the end of this month. End of my report.
Thank you, Treasurer Schwab. Item F, change the name of the Economic Development slash Genesee Theater Committee to the Economic Development Committee. Motion by Alderman Cunningham, seconded by Alderman Valco. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item G, proposed council committee schedule dates. First Monday, Judiciary Committee, five PM, Public Safety Committee at six PM. Third Monday, Finance Committee, five PM, Public Works Committee, six PM. Economic Development, Labor Relations, and Insurance Committees shall be ad hoc, scheduled as needed basis. So move. Meeting start times may be adjusted as necessary. Motion by Alderman Tempest, seconded by Alderman Moizio. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman's time, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman May.
Thank you, I'll be quick. I just want to make a quick announcement. We have three local businesses that are going for a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant from Chase Bank, and those businesses are Greentown, oh, four businesses, Little Fort Media, Greentown Tavern, Big Ads, and Rhythm Academy of Dance. You might have read a small story that I think was in the New Sun over the weekend or today. Anyhow, if you're on Facebook, go to these businesses' pages, and please vote for them, and let's help some of our local businesses get a quarter of a million dollar grant. And then my only other announcement is, you may notice that the city leaf trucks are back in service, and so I just want to remind you that the leaf schedule is on the city website. And please, please follow the guidelines that are set by Public Works, they're there for a reason. Put your leaves on the curb, not in the street. When they're on the street, they get in the gutters and they clog up our sewers. The city will come by and move the leaves into the street on the day that they're going to vacuum. So that's just your reminder, the schedule is on the city website, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Alderman Valco.
Thank you. I had a meeting for the residents of the eighth ward last week. I want to thank all the department heads that showed up and told the residents of what they do for the city. We had a surprise guest, the mayor showed up, thank you, mayor. It was unexpected. I got a couple of phone calls that they were surprised that the mayor showed up at a ward meeting. I also want to thank the residents, because the World Series game was on and it was pouring out, and it was very well attended. During that meeting, I told them, and some of the people had not known about this, that you can sign up to get robo-calls from the city for emergencies, eighth ward functions, for functions within your respective wards, and anything else, like boil water, or lost children, or whatever, the city will come, the city will provide that service for free to the residents. All you have to do is go down and sign up on one of these pieces of paper here, or you can go on the website and you can sign up. And it'll either be your landline, if you don't have a landline, you can use your cell phone, or just do it, your email. So you can either go to the website, or you can go down in the lobby or up here on the second floor, grab a piece of the, it's called Connect CTY, and drop it off right there at the receptionist, or up at the mayor's office, or ideally at Information Technologies, and we'll get you on the phone list. My wife and I, Jane, you didn't say this, usually you do, so I'm going to pick it up here, because I always dovetail on you. My wife Liz and I went to the Genesee Theater Saturday night, saw George Lopez, unbelievable, sold-out concert. It was just fantastic. It was nice to see the amount of people and the traffic that was down there. The performance actually started a half an hour late because people couldn't get there. Genesee Street, I guess, looked like the old days, maybe during Scoop the Loop or whatever, because it was packed. We're going to see, other things that we're going to go see, Spank is coming in a couple of weeks, for those of you who aren't aware of that, it's a parody on Fifty Shades of Grey, is that correct? Those books that you women, the trilogy that you women like to read. Other things that are going, there are, what I want to do is, I want to say that the new management company is really fantastic. They're bringing in all sorts of new acts, Styx, the comedians Ron White and Sinbad, Manhattan Transfer is coming in, Chris Isaac is coming in. So go to their website, or just go down to the box office and get yourself some tickets, because it's really good. And I want to commend, first, Midwest Bank, Midwest Generation, Friends of the Genesee, and definitely U-Line Corporation for all their work and their donations that they've done. Tonight, you heard that the city council gave authorization to buy two new SUVs for the police department. The K-9 unit is going to use these for their dogs. So this would debunk and dispel any rumors that I've been hearing that we're not going to have the K-9s anymore, that the chief doesn't want K-9s. Well, I can tell you, the chief used to be a K-9 officer, and he strongly supports anything to do with K-9s. So, and I have to tell you from my heart, because I'm a straight shooter, if you really don't know what you're talking about, please don't dispel rumors that are contradictory to what's going on within the city of Waukegan, let alone the police department. Oh, and this, if you heard it tonight, this money is coming out of the DUI fund, so it's not costing the citizens any money at all. One last thing. We have a lot of foreclosures within the city of Waukegan, not as many as we did three or four years ago. Two thousand and eight was the bad year. The last five years, things are picking up. Some of you are saying you don't believe it, but it is. I think that by next year, maybe twenty-fifteen at the latest, things may be back on track. If you're having problems with your mortgage, loss of job, medical bills, whatever the reason is, I'm going to give you a number in a couple of seconds here, so go get a pencil, and I'm going to give you this number. Senator, State Senator Melinda Bush had a seminar over the weekend out at CLC. And what it is, it was a foreclosure prevention seminar, and together, beside Senator Bush, it was put on by the Illinois Attorney General's Office. So if you're about to go into foreclosure, or you're having problems, the number that you want to call, it's the Attorney General Foreclosure Hotline, and the number is eight-six-six-five-four-four-seven-one-five-one. And what that is, it'll help you with a home modification loan. Now, the call's free, people, and the service is also free. So I'm going to give you that number one more time, if you're having financial problems with your home being in foreclosure. And that's all I have, sir.
Alderman Rivera.
Thank you. I, this week, past week, I met with the staff over at the Waukegan Public Library, and I want to commend what they're doing, especially with their programming, with teaching immigrants and Hispanics how to speak English. I think it's very important that if, you know, if they learn how to speak English, it will, you know, create a better, better community, no question about it. So I commend what they're doing there, and hopefully everyone continues to support their programming there. And I also can understand, Sam Alderman Cunningham, your concern with the, with the GED program in the jails, and that's being taken away. You know, I went to the board meeting, Lake County College Board meeting the other day too, and, and wanted to hear some of their, you know, issues and the discussions. And I see where you're coming from, and I think that's, we need those programs in there, no question about it. Earlier this evening, we also had our TIF hearings, and, you know, we have an obligation to the, to the city of Waukegan, to, to try to promote growth, and there's no better way than TIF districts in promoting development. We need to create new tax revenue, and this is a great way of doing it, and it's not raising taxes. Look what the TIF district did over there in Fountain Square. I mean, you look at it now, ten years ago, in the early part of two thousand, you know, it wasn't even nowhere like it is now. So the TIF district definitely does its job, there's no question about it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Alderman Cunningham.
I'll be quite brief. One of the things that I want to talk about, we often hear, particularly in the first ward, of how young people are not trying to be successful in life. I received a knock on my door of my neighbor who, after graduating from Waukegan Public Schools, knew where he wanted to go. He went to the armed forces, the Army. After his training and, and things, he then was shipped off to Afghanistan, where he was fighting the war for our country. And he then, due to some normal patrolling, was caught in some crossfires, and I'm getting this secondhand. The young man was injured, but in the process of, process of being injured, he was able to save some lives of his fellow troops by stepping on a, on a mine. Now, from my understanding, this was not a, I guess it was like a dud, or it wasn't as powerful as, but he was able to do that. He was injured, but he saved the lives of his fellow troops. The name of this young man is, his name is Michael, and I'm going to spell his last name so I don't mess it up, I just call him Little Mike. Correct pronunciation, correct spelling of his last name is P-A-R-T-Y-K-A. You can understand why I want to spell it. But, and the most humbling part about this is that he did not want to be recognized. He simply said that I was doing my job for our country. He simply said that I was doing my job for our country. When he came back, he was, went to the hospital, came back and there was, as they do with all of our soldiers, nice little fanfare. It wasn't in Illinois, it was in another state where he's stationed at. And he was, I won't say upset, but he just didn't want all of that. He was begging them to stop, stop, stop. And he uttered out, "I was just doing my job." Wow, a kid from Waukegan. And on his mom was telling me, I said, "Would you mind if I just mentioned his name on council floor?" She said, "I had to think about it, let me call him to find out." And he didn't mind. And this is what he said to me, or she said to me, that he want to let people know that you can be successful coming out of Waukegan High Schools and that is the reason why I want people to know that. And I was just so proud of, not of him, but what he was standing for and the message that he wanted to send to our young people who are going to school, who you often hear all the time that Waukegan is this, Waukegan is that, Waukegan schools don't do that. I'm here to tell you, it can happen. It won't be the easiest thing in the world, but it can happen. And we have an example right here of a young man directly across the street from him. I can just see his face right now, very petite young man, long hair, and this is where he's at. So, I'm very proud of him and I'm proud of his mom and his family for rearing such a fine young man out of our city. So, that's what I want to bring to the night, Mayor. If, when, if and when he comes home, and I think he's supposed to be, being, I don't know if it's word, discharged or not, sometime at the end of the year, beginning of 2015, when he comes, I'm going to hope that he comes up here so he can meet us and we can thank him. I know Steve, you're definitely, this, this is somebody I know you would, you would definitely want to meet. That's all I have to say. Oh, go Bears, go Bears. Thank you.
Alderman Conkin.
Thank you. Just to top off Alderman Cunningham's sentiments, yes, we are very proud and this is a young man, it's now one of our veterans and we do have Veterans Day Parade come up. I'll be downtown, I hope to see a whole bunch of people down there. I actually took a look at the new city sticker design, I think it's very nice, I think it's outstanding. I see we went back to the rectangles. I hope we went, make sure we go back to another design next year, keep that in mind so we can tell the differences from year to year. And I went to City Yards on Friday, we got our new vehicle in. And City Yards is going to prepare to have their guys get, get ready to take down some of these abandoned houses that have been turned into squatters and used by squatters, drugs, drug dealers, drug users, just to keep hidden. It's a big vehicle and it's, it's a monster. So, when it gets to work, I think everything's going to start making everybody in the city a little bit happier. That's all I have, thank you, Your Honor.
Alderman Conkin.
Yes.
I drove that thing Friday.
Did you?
Yeah. And Friday, when we take down our first house, I'm going to take the first whack at it.
Outstanding.
As insurance advisor, I strong. Strong.
Advise, we have someone else there.
I will.
By your side.
Alderman Moizio.
Pass.
Alderman Beadley.
I pass.
Alderman Newsome.
Passing.
Alderman Tempest.
I thought Treasurer Trick went very well, I like the hours of two to four, but that's all I have to say.
Motion by Alderman Beadley, second by Alderman Tempest, to adjourn. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Adjourned.